Did what?
Mine.
I had a, I had a, my, my wife's father, we thought there was a suspected heart attack, so we had to drive back in a hurry this weekend. But he was, he ended up being fine. Everything's good on my side, it was.
My brother, Terry, quite suddenly sixty-two, just terrible. Didn't expect it at all. Thank you, thank you.
Close to it, what do you think? Everybody ready? Everybody ready? Like to call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order. Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Here.
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 Here. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number four, public comment on agenda items only. Seeing that there's none, we'll move on. Next is number five, approved minutes from August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three, city council meeting. Any revisions, discussions, or concerns? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number six, approved minutes from the August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three executive session. Any concerns, questions, modifications? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number seven, approve bills in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and eleven cents as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number eight, approve August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three payroll in the amount of eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll. Second.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number nine, ordinance number one-two-three-four dash zero-nine-zero-five-two-three, increases monthly wage of city treasurer. Anybody like to discuss this first a little bit?
Yeah, I, I had brought it up to the council previously, and I think what we have with our current treasurer is, he's taken on quite a bit of responsibility, and I feel that, you know, he should basically be squared away the same as that we are as commissioners. And he's got a lot of work on his plate, and he's been very good about it, and I just think it's fair to him that, you know, for the amount of work that he's doing, it's equal to the workload that we take on as commissioners, that he be, he be made whole the right way, so that's all I have.
And Terry, or excuse me, Tony, I presented two different formats of that ordinance. One of them was retroactive back to May first, so.
Yeah, to when we got seated, I thought that was fair. So that's what I, that's what I would push for.
Okay.
He's been doing a lot of work ever since we, we took, took our seats. I think it's one of those, I don't know when the last time it was raised, but it's one of those that was significantly lower than, than a lot of other things that got raised in the last five, six years. So, any other questions, concerns, or discussion on the topic? I'll look for a motion to approve then.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number ten, ordinance number one-two-three-five-zero-dash-zero-nine-zero-five-two-three, raises maximum part-time wage. This is one that we talked about a little bit. What this is, is there's an ordinance out there that allows the various departmental commissioners to hire part-time people. The, the people that they can hire for part-time, they have a wage range. Right now, it goes from minimum wage to seventeen dollars. The concern is, obviously, with the, with the wage rate increase that's gonna happen, it's going to shorten their range of capabilities of what they get to do to, to hire for stuff like that. So, I think we talked about ra- raising it to, I believe the maximum was, was twenty. So, it hasn't been raised in a few years, I think it was set in twenty-seventeen, the last one it was set for, I believe. So, any other discussions, concerns, or comments over it?
No, I think we talked about this at the last meeting.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, in that case, if there's no other concerns or questions or modifications, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll approve ordinance number one-two-three-five-dash-zero-nine-zero-five-two-three.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number eleven, update on Clark and Hickory culvert repair. Commissioner McDermott, you wanna talk about this, or introduce if we have a speaker, I think?
We have a speaker. Jim?
So, we've had problems with culverts on Clark Street and Hickory Street, they're failing badly. And the council authorized us to be engineering to replace them. We've gotten approval from Department of Transportation recently, so we won't go out for bid. But this project is unusual because the culverts are deep, the roads aren't very wide, so we have to do nighttime closures. So, we need to get the word out to the public that there's gonna be one night for Clark Street and a second night for Hickory Street Avenue sometime early next summer. Well, we're gonna close the street overnight and do the works, get at least one lane open by six AM the next morning. So, our plan is to notify the public ahead of time, the residents back there ahead of time. And it rains to have a shuttle of some sort, where there's a car, pickup truck, golf cart, to shuttle them from their house to the culvert, and from the culvert to wherever they park their car on the other side, so. The whole idea of getting up and speaking tonight is to let you guys know that specifically, so you can get the word out to the residences and stuff like that.
Now, are you looking to do it, um, both culverts in one particular night, or one, so it's gonna be two nights of that?
So, when you close the Clark Street one, you can't get to the Hickory Street.
Correct.
So, and we're doing the Clark Street one first because we didn't think that the culvert would hold up for the trucks hauling in the box culverts to get to Hickory Street. We're actually gonna have to do some repairs to the Clark Street culvert before our contractor starts. Now, if you've been there recently, we got part of one lane blocked off now because the pavement's failing, so we gotta, we gotta fix that just before we do repairs, so we can use it while we're doing the downstream portion of the culvert, and then also when they do nighttime closure, all the rest of them will drift out, and we'll build enough of it to get traffic, at least one lane of traffic open.
Do you have any, so we started this project, if I remember right, almost probably a year, year and a half ago. I know we had a lot of holds up with red tape and stuff like that, was it the bats was the holdup, or was there a cultural study?
We had to do bats, and we had to go through archaeological, biological, and we got those approvals last week. We crossed the Ts and dotted our I's and plans, submitted those to IDOT. The city got a letter today saying that they were approved, and we can start advertising for bid on Thursday.
Okay, but are we thinking we're gonna be able to get it done this year, but we're not thinking?
No, we're not gonna be able to get it done this year. So, we're going to let them order their materials, get them, get it all planned out and ready to go. And we're not, we're gonna let them start in May twenty-sixth of next year. And then they can't do any nighttime closures until June third or after, because that's, that's a bus rush, so I didn't want any hiccups with school buses and stuff like that, you know, not be able to pick up the kids.
Let me ask the what-if scenario, because now that we're approved, what would, what hap- what happened if it were to fail? Because we had to go so long for this stuff, and we identified that it was a real problem. What would happen if it, would we be authorized to get a contractor in there? To have emergency repair, if we had to, or is, is the materials just not even available if that were the case?
It wouldn't be available. These have boxes of five-by-four woodcast concrete box culverts coming in, six or eight sections, depending what the contractor decides to order. If something happened, we'd have to shove a smaller diameter pipe in it and backfill and keep it open as best we could until we get a proper replacement. Both those streets are one, one-way in and out, they're dead ends, so that's, that's the problem we have with it. And the original culverts were put in in the nineteen-seventies, and they're made of metal, and the bottoms are completely rusted out and being pushed in. Soil's leaving behind the pipes, that's why you gotta cut the big dips. For years, they, they fixed Hickory and poured a concrete patch over it, it's just, it's got a big sway on it, a sway in it right now, so.
So, in other words, your recommendation, take action tonight, keep it moving?
Keep it moving, yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Terry, we'll have to notify police and fire and analysts when that's gonna happen, so they can stage whatever equipment they might want on the other side of that culvert closure, or the street closure, so they can respond if they have to. So, I'm worried about that, have them come up with a plan, all right?
Sounds good.
As a reminder, I should just let people know that I was able to secure something through Pohar. If the Clark Street one were to fail, I, I did have emergency access authorization through them that we could go through, there's a back route there. The Hickory one, no, there isn't. There's nothing for Hickory, but for the Clark one, there was an emergency access route that we could get in within probably a couple hours.
So, the Clark Street technically can extend all the way out to Lewis, I suppose, that might be the way you're talking about. Right. If we're just gonna shove, we just plow up the corn and beans or whatever and put down some rock and hope for the best, right?
They said we could put, if we need to lay some rock down, we could have it out in a couple hours, but Hickory is still the problem, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next is number twelve, seek bids for Clark and Hickory culvert replacement.
And that's exactly why we need the bids. Jim explained it right there. So, anybody need to talk anymore about that?
Do we need to take action, or make a motion?
We should make a mo- make a motion to go out for bid, so that way they can start the bid process.
Let's, I'll make a motion that we seek bids for Clark and Hickory culvert replacement.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number thirteen, approve updated Illinois Valley Regional Dispatch Intermodal Agreement. So, the original IBRD agreement we had is from, I think it's twenty, not sure if it's twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen. So, this one basically updates it, there's not a whole lot more to it in there, there is gonna be, I wanna say it's a four percent increase is what they're looking to do, but the amount of savings we have because of IBRD and everything was one, it's a fantastic thing that got put together back in twenty sixteen. Pat, was there any other important things in there that?
I, I don't think so, Jason, the, the number is not in here, the revised agreement allows the board, of which you have several members, make that decision along the way. From time to time, that number's gonna change. It's based on a per capita number, so each municipality contributes proportionally to this venture. And I think Jason said the board's talking about increasing it, what, from three to four now?
Four percent, yeah.
Yeah, but they can do that anytime without council approval.
Well, but we, we have representation on that board, we have, you know, we're less than twenty-five percent of it, but we have twenty-five percent of the board, which is, which is fantastic thing for Oglesby.
Yeah.
So, and, and they had a major, for those that don't know, IBRD had a major renovation, renovation probably about two years ago, and we were able to do it in a way to where none of the cities raised their per capita rates or anything like that, they're able to do it with their, with the existing intermodal remote agreement, so I think it's a good thing.
I, I think the, the primary change in this new revised amended agreement is the rotation of the president. It used to be very dictated, it was this person from your municipality first, this person second, this person third, and now they let you guys decide.
So, okay, so I can talk about that a little bit, I was on, so what happened was, it, it would start with Peru, and it said it was their police chief. Then it went to La Salle, and went to their fire chief. Then it went to Mendota and be their police chief, and then Oglesby as their fire chief. The problem is with the way those rotations work, and we, we talked about that because somebody couldn't, whatever city could have an election, they could change their police chief or their fire chief around. So, you might have somebody forced to take over on the board that they've just assumed the position. So, it keeps the rotation of which cities will have the board president, but allows the, the city to determine who, who they want it to be the president on the board. So, I think it's a good thing. That's about the biggest thing.
I didn't see any problems with it, it was forty-five pages of very fine print, but I felt to give you a proper opinion, I should read it before you approved it, and I didn't see any other problems with it.
Any other questions on it? If I could get a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the updated Illinois Valley Regional Dispatch IGA's.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Uh, number fourteen, old business, first item I got on here is cost sharing for installation of sewer check valves. I don't think they, we have them in the packets here, uh, but for those that, I know Terry and I were on the, the council when it was discussed, we had it all in front of each other and stuff like that. What this is, this is based on, uh, we had some residents that, that called in and, and had some complaints, and I had a great conversation with the La Salle, City of La Salle's engineer. And they shared with me their plan of how they have some of this solved. Now, we've talked about this in detail in the past, I should say, the council in the past has talked about it in detail. And the problem is, even though there might be a failure with a lift station or something like that, the city doesn't really have any legal liability because it wasn't done through negligence. Problem with this is, you know, obviously, people buy a home and they have an expectation that their sewers aren't going to back up. So, we thought this would be a good, uh, happy medium, that the city doesn't pay for, directly for this home improvement, it's a cost-sharing initiative. La Salle did it, I think they do ten thousand dollars a year, up to, uh, two thousand per home, and I think ours, I don't have the original one in front of me, but I think it's gonna be four thousand.
Four thousand, Jason.
So, you have the original, the one there?
Right. Four thousand, um, fifty-fifty split, never to exceed two thousand per residence, so you can only do two in the first year.
Yeah, so, so again, the last council never approved it, we had, for whatever reason, we had other things going on. So, and it was on our agenda for a working meeting, but meeting went so long, so that's why it eventually got moved back to here. I know Commissioner McDermott and I did have a, a conversation with, uh, one of those residents that really wanted to get this program, so I, I told them we'd get it back on the agenda to discuss. So, is there any concerns about that, or any thoughts, or recommendations, or what do you think?
If I remember, Jason, I think one of the concerns we were talking about in the last administration was how do we prioritize who's gonna be awarded the program, the money for the program? And whether we do a lottery, or whatever the case may be, I think that probably has to be defined somewhere in our ordinance.
Yeah, so right now, the ordinance has something, again, it's just a draft, but it had something in there that they had to have had a problem, I think, in the last two years?
Yeah, they had to provide a substantiation of that problem. It was within the last two years, and I was thinking it was like first in, first out, but I could be wrong about that. I mean, you could provide a deadline and then do a lottery or something, I just think it would be fair whether you guys wanna do it.
For the sake of time, I'd ask that we table that, so we can get better prepared for that. I don't see any sense in sitting here talking about it all night.
No, I, I do wanna see what people think about it, if there's any, before we move on, one thing I wanted to, it should be fair to let people know. So, I've talked to a total of three residents that were for this thing, that really want something like this, and I've also talked to two that don't want it. Because there's somebody that in the last ten years have had an issue, and they came out of pocket and paid for it, so they thought that would be unfair. So, I just wanted to make sure people are aware of that, that it's out there, uh, to discuss, so there is some, some ramifications for that. I still think it's a good thing to do it or not, but again, I was curious if anybody had any thought process. We do have a prepared version of it, because I think Pat prepared it, prepared it like four, five months ago. But if everybody wants to take a look at it, see if they have any other thoughts on it, I just wanna know if there's any.
I can share it with you guys, the one I did before, and see what you think. Looks like this was done in March.
But if somebody had any major recommendations for it now, we could always have them draft something different, or anything like that, or if you want to abandon it. Or if you don't think we have enough information, we can table it too.
I, I think tabling is the way to go, I'd have to have more information in front of me to take a position one way or the other on it.
Okay. Let's get more information, table it for now.
All right. Is there a motion to table?
Like to make a motion to table the sewer check valves.
Second.
Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next one is discuss burn ban options. Commissioner Udis and I have been talking quite a bit about this. Had some recommendations, maybe from looking at some of the stuff that maybe Mendota had, I know in the news, Spring Valley has done some stuff with it. So, we had a couple discussions about that. Commissioner Udis, did you have anything you wanted to discuss on it, or?
Just to make sure we're both on the same page, Jason, I think what we discussed was doing away with burn barrels, um, no burning at all on Mondays. Recreational fires any other day besides Monday, with the burn days, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from eight AM, extending instead of four to six PM on those days. I think the biggest reason for this, like Jason and I were talking, is because we have other means to get rid of yard waste. We have these programs in the city that, that we encourage you to take advantage of, and, you know, burn is not the best way to get rid of your yard waste. It's, it's got repercussions for neighbors and everything else, so I think we need to find a happy medium.
I, I do too. Oglesby, I think, ever since I've lived here, has done a lot of great things to really curtail that, whether it's been the, the branch shipping pickup, the leaf vac that goes for six weeks, um, and then now recently, in the last couple months, we've extended it to where you no longer need to have a, a tag for your yard waste. So, the reasons for someone to, to, to burn yard waste have severely diminished over time, so I think restricting the amount of days that people can burn yard waste, I think is a, I think is a fair thing. The recommendation to go to six PM is one thing on there, so at least expand that, but I'm okay with that idea of, of the restrictions to restricting it further. Does anybody else have thoughts on that or something, or?
I think the reason for that was that if a guy doesn't get up work until four o'clock, at least he still has a couple hours to, if he wanted to burn, to still fit in that window, with only having one day of the weekend, that's, that's a burn day. Just gives a little, we're taking something to.
And we still honor the old, uh, remnant of Mondays, because Mondays used to be laundry day, where there was no fires for any kind, stuff like that, so we still pay homage to that, I think, a little bit. Um, if nobody has any concerns or questions about that.
When can you burn then?
So, Rich, it would be, um, Thursday, Friday, Saturday from eight AM to six PM. And we'll be doing away with burn barrels as well.
Yep.
So, could you have a recreational fire the other nights?
Every day except for Monday.
Okay.
How's that sound, everybody?
I can live with that. Sounds pretty good, pretty fair.
Do we wanna make a motion to send that to Pat to, to draft the ordinance modification, and then we can even let the, uh?
I'll put that in a form of motion, Jason, that we, with those stipulations, we have Pat draw it up to modify the existing ordinance.
And that would give us.
I wrote it all down, Terry, so I think I got it.
And that would give us another, uh, meeting, in case the residents wanted to talk about that, if they had any concerns, they'd have that option before we formally adopt.
I'll try to have it ready for the next meeting for you. And I'll second that.
I made a motion.
Does a motion, and a second? Roll call please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
Udis.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nolly.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. All right, next one, council chambers, city offices. Put that one on here.
I did. A number of things I wanna discuss here. We've been looking into, uh, making this a little bit more presentational, I guess, for the public and us as well. Looks like Ikea tables, and I don't feel that it's, uh, it's very professional, especially when people are coming in here looking to spend a million or two million dollars, and we're sitting here at these things. But, uh, we received a bid from a local contractor for thirty-four thousand dollars, which I'd like to ask my fellow council members, uh, for their suggestions and advice on what we should do from this. But I also happen to be going through the state statutes and seeing that one of the statutes says that the mayor and each commissioner shall have an office at the municipal building or rooms. I feel we should, uh, definitely take that into consideration about moving downstairs and try and determine what would be the best for the city hall here, as far as everything, having this all redone, and the office there downstairs, everything needs to be updated, so. I feel, uh, I would like some suggestions from everyone else, their opinions on this is what we can do, and what would be best for the taxpayers, save us the most amount of money.
Well, I'll start. The number one thing, I think, as far as offices goes, I really believe that the, uh, the city clerk needs a wider type of office. There's a lot of things that she might do where she needs to talk to, uh, personnel or employees, or have them an opportunity to look at stuff. So, she needs some kind of table in there to where she can sit down with employees one-on-one, if that's the case. As far as offices for commissioners, I'll, I'll let you guys decide that. I will tell you a little bit of history on it, there was an office down there, 'cause I thought I really needed an office here to be, get as much stuff done. And it took about a year and a half to get the one downstairs completed and ready to use, but by that point, I was so far into it, I just continued to use everything at home instead. So, there is one downstairs, I don't think it's very conducive, 'cause it feels like it's in a broom closet. Um, I, I don't know, I'll let you guys decide what you think you wanna do with that.
Do you have access issues with no elevators during the meeting?
Well, you, you, you're stealing my thunder now, 'cause I was just about to go there as the code guy. No, I, you know what, Rich, I, I, I think it's a great idea, I think, and I've said this before, when we, you know, when we put this presentation monitor up, you know, both you and, and Mac helped out with it, and, and I think it's just, we're trying to give it a facelift, and I think it's a point of civic pride. I think, you know, when, when people come in here and they watch us do the business of the city, it looks good if you have a good presentation, and I mean, this is, this is okay to get by, but I do think we can do better than this, and I agree with you. As the accounts and finance guy, I'd be willing to sit down with you, crunch some numbers, come up with a budget. We can track any of the expenses through the clerk's office, so everything is nice and itemized out. And I do agree with you, Jason, that, uh, you know, there needs to be some more meeting space up here. So, here's the one thing that I would say, is that we do have to figure in the ADA compliance factor, because if we're gonna have a conference room up here, that whether it's the mayor, or the commissioners, or the clerk, that somebody can use, it has to be ADA compliant. Now, the way that we can make that work is that if, if, if us, if all of us guys decide that we're gonna take office downstairs, this can become a conference room, and we meet that requirement, but if, once we start shifting all that, we can't hold ourselves to a different standard. We have to hold ourselves to the same standard that somebody coming to get a building permit would, would be held to, so that's what I would say as far as that part goes. I do think we need a, a conference room up here, because there's often times where one of the commissioners is here meeting with somebody, the mayor's always meeting with somebody, clerk's always got people in and out of her office, and I think it's unfair to her, because it's like meeting in a closet. So, it would be nice to have a conference room up here, that would be a general conference room that everybody can use at a given point, not dedicated to just one or the other. That's my two cents. Thanks for leaving me out, man.
It's, I don't have a comment on that necessarily. Uh, the, the thing about the thirty-four thousand, if you remember, one of the things I found was, there was a put-together piece of furniture that we could have for our council dais, and that was like thirty-two thousand alone. So, if a contractor's willing to come and put one in, it looks nice, then just, just for that raw comparable thirty-five, thirty-four thousand, doesn't even sound that terrible, which is crazy when you think about a desk.
Being in construction, I don't think we should rush the judgment here. Uh, I think we need to weigh everything, because, uh, you go building something like that, and then we all change our minds and say, hey, why didn't we do this? And then you're thirty-two thousand dollars in debt, and, uh, you basically got firewood at that point. So, I feel there's a lot of things that need to be addressed here. We need to work on something for the clerks, we need to work, that room needs to be soundproofed. You want different, uh, technology put in there, uh, we need different technology downstairs. I believe we need to sit down and go over exactly what all we need, and what makes the most sense, and is the best for us financially, because I don't, I don't see the sense in jumping in and having this done just because we want it done.
I was under the impression that we wanted to update the, uh, the conference room that we have downstairs, but if your concern is the, uh, the ADA compliance, then we start running into, what are we gonna do with our existing room that we have up here? There's a lot of concerns about that then.
I think that one I can speak to. Up here, I think we're, we're in good shape, because we can, you can still have your council meeting up here, you have a conference room, and we don't have to add any more money to technology. If we all decide to go downstairs, you can have your closed session like we do down there, we can have technology down there, where now we're actually saving the taxpayer money, because instead of having to put more technology in other places, we can centralize it. But I do think that's something that I would just urge you guys to keep in mind, that the ADA compliance thing is a real deal, and once we start shifting stuff, we, we have to, we have to keep that in mind. It'd be, it'd be hypocritical on our part to, you know, have a business coming in, you know, provide ADA compliance, and then us, we go and start moving our offices and, and, and not take that into consideration, so.
Should be a consideration, obviously.
We had a guy today that was in a wheelchair for our meeting, for our one out, I mean, it's gonna happen.
Oh, yeah.
I think thirty-four thousand is, is a little steep, in my opinion. I think we can go out for some more bids, uh, getting someone to build it. I know we have to be a prevailing wage, but I still think that seems high, in my opinion, just framing it out of two-by-fours and having finished plywood. You know, is basically what we're looking at.
It could be purchased, like Jason said, and we wouldn't do the prevailing wage thing, we would buy it.
Well, yeah, but that, that is still gonna be thirty-two thousand dollars, or am I right?
Yeah, I think there's gonna be.
And we gotta put it together, yeah, too, whatever.
And again, I don't know that it would even fit in here, like, we may not have the same space footprint, so.
I think we're better off to have it custom-made if possible, because it's, if we're gonna spend the money, you want it to look nice, and I think if you get a kit, uh, I don't know, we could get into trouble.
You wanna build it to size, depending on your room, and I, I agree with you, I think that's.
You know, the biggest thing we gotta look at is the ADA. I mean, are they able to fit into the clerk's office or mayor's office?
That's what I mean, is if you have an elderly person that comes in, I mean, it, I think it's just poor, it's a poor presentation on our part as the city officials, where you don't have a place to. as the city officials, where you don't have a place to accommodate them.
That should be number one, the ADA.
I can tell you just at first glance, it doesn't look like a 36-inch door to me.
That's exactly what I'm staring at.
No, but it's going to be easier to widen that door than it is to try and put an elevator or stair chair. We have to put a lift chair or something like that.
We can't afford that.
That's what I'm saying, you're, you know...
I often thought about doing something with the vault room, but I just realized how expensive, because I'm sure that's surrounded by something that's crazy.
Oh, yeah.
You won't get through that.
So, modifying that is, because it's kind of a wasted piece of space, but that probably is not going to be cheap to modify that. Okay. Any other discussion on this topic item?
Do we need to make a motion to what? Is there anything we need to do to what, maybe ask an engineer or something to try and figure out what would be the best way to go up here?
We were going to bring that architect in, but then we saw the cost of that as well. So, unless we're, but we might need something like that, to come in and tell us how we can use our existing space and stuff, so.
And Rich, the thing is, if it's not over $25,000, you don't have to go out for bid. Twenty for council approval, so depending on what it is that you're talking about doing at a given time, you know, if it's something where we're only talking about a couple thousand bucks, you really don't, I mean, you have the power to do it. You don't need official action on the council's part.
I would rather get everyone involved and get the suggestions and everyone's opinions, because like I said, you go put that in here for $34,000, and then you decide to tear that wall down, and it's, it looks absolutely stupid here.
You help me out, and I'm willing to help you out. We did this, I appreciated all the help, so whatever you need from me, you put me to work.
I think we need to have a professional look at it.
I think at this point, if you're talking about rearranging some of the walls and the design and features and everything like that, to figure out how you can make extra rooms and the ADA compliant, utilize what we currently have, I think that we're going to have to bite the bullet and get an architect involved here to tell us, here's what you can and can't do. Because I know there was some concerns about, like, for example, that pillar right there.
Well, you're not taking a pillar out.
You can't take the pillar out, right? Because that was a concern about trying to shrink it up, because remember how the room doesn't look symmetrical? And that was a discussion.
I would say start with the city engineer. He could probably at least give you some suggestions. You just got put to work, my friends.
Again.
Again.
Knock that plus up.
Always. I appreciate it.
I, no, I think, you know, we've talked about it here and there loosely, but I think, you know, he's bright enough to give you some good ideas. And then from there, if we need to bring in somebody, then we can cross that bridge, but at least this way it's...
All right.
So, look for some more information based on that one?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next item. New business. I'll get to that. At the end, I'll have one. First one here is lease agreement with Adventure E-Bike Rental.
Yeah, I would like to introduce Joshua here from Adventure E-Bike Rental. He's going to tell us a little bit about all this. I gave you guys his rental agreement here to go through while he's talking to us.
A little bit about me. So, I'm currently contracted through the DNR. I have seven locations. I do four Illinois State Parks. I do two along the I-AM Canal Trail. So, I do one in location, and one in LaSalle, and also one in Utica. I recently just took another location at Star Rock Marina. So, I do a sales location down there, where they can test ride the bikes, and then around the marina, and then I'll buy a bike if they're interested. So, I mainly do rentals. I've been doing it for about a year and a half now. And then, yeah, so it's a lot of fun. Haven't had any problems so far, knock on wood. But, yeah, so I was originally approached about setting up here in Oglesby. So, I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have for me, and then go from there.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for donating the e-bike to Officer Budak. It was very nice of you. We appreciate that as a city. Thank you.
No problem. I try to do as much as I can as far as donations.
Really appreciate you.
I'm going to do one for Christmas next year. I've got one set up. It's going to be, I'll start donating at least two e-bikes to different communities, and to get the kids back out there riding, you know, doing outdoor activities and something like that, so it should be good next year.
It's very kind of you. Thank you.
So, I have a question. How many, so in a city like of our size or something like that, how many bikes do you have on like a rack that people can rent? Is it?
Ten.
Ten? Ten bikes and stuff like that?
Ten bikes at a time.
And do you have any power requirements or something like that? Do people pay with like an app? Or is it like a thing where they, how does that work?
The phone service that's set up onsite. So, when I set up at a location, I'm there all day, in case there's any problems with the device, anything happens, I'm there the entire time.
Oh, it's a manned bike rental?
Yes. They get a business card when they leave. They have my number and full contact with them the entire time. They usually park by the location, and they ride for an hour or two, and then they come back and pay at the end, and stuff like that, so, yeah. That way, if anything happens with the bike, like I said, I'm there to take care of the problem.
I do like that. I think that's, that's pretty good. At least you have, you know, it's always nice to have somebody to be able to go to. You know, with the app, it's totally impersonal, and if there's a problem, you're at the mercy of, here's your credit card, and here's the machine, so.
What's your average cost to rent a bike?
It's $15 per hour.
Fifteen an hour.
I'm actually, it's cheaper than you'd expect, and I do a price match guarantee. So, I don't do it for the money. It's more or less to keep everybody, get everybody else involved, and let everybody have a good time riding the bikes. Make sure we feel like it should be an affordable experience for everybody, riding a bicycle.
That's good.
You know, but of course, electric's the way to go these days, so we're encouraged to go ride a electric instead of that.
I like it. I like what I'm hearing.
That's pretty cool. Very cool.
I do have future plans, so I go over stuff like that in more detail around with you guys individually, as far as stuff to do with Oglesby. So, I don't want to get into a lot of it up here, more or less. If you have any questions, I'll be here at the end, for your approach, and then go from there.
Well, I will say Oglesby is, one of the things we've been trying to do is make ourselves more of an outdoor adventure center. We got disc golf coming. We got so many things kind of coming in. There is a long-term plan for obviously what IDNR is going to do with the parks around us. That's not really been decided yet, but we have a lot of things that we're trying to do locally here. So, I mean, something like this sounds pretty interesting.
Of course, future endeavors with the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, I'll be involved with it here. So, I'll be progressing hopefully to more state parks, and things like that in the future.
Well, let us know what the next steps could be, that we could explore this a little further and kind of go from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, new business is discuss making modifications to Section 8.44, abandoned vehicles of the municipal code.
Yeah, so this is mine. We're having a hard time with enforcement of abandoned vehicles from private property, because the way that the ordinance reads, it doesn't give a means for removing vehicles from private property. So, I was hoping Pat could figure out a way to work that into the ordinance, so that we have a method to get those taken care of.
Is that your only concern, Terry?
That's my only concern.
Okay.
Everything else seems to be addressed pretty well from public property and whatnot, but we really don't have it defined for private property.
Really? So, we have it, so it's against our ordinance for people to do it, but we don't have the means to remove the, is that correct?
That's my understanding, right, Mike? Is that your understanding?
It's like, you can issue a citation, but actually, does that deal with from their property? But, they just continue not to prepare the petition. It says, "public right of way," but nothing about private property.
Don't they have to be licensed and insured, or no?
They have to have current plates on them, probably, Mike, don't they?
Right.
Yeah.
But, we can issue the citations all we want, but at what point do you want us to go in there and remove it?
Okay.
Or do we just continue to issue citations?
We need a way to get out of there if we're not applying.
So, that's the concern. We have the citations, but there's no way to take action on it. Okay.
I'll take a look at that.
Thanks, Pat.
I'll check on my recommendations.
Do you need that in a motion, Jason, for it to send it back?
Do you think well, that is a motion, or we just, because you don't even have, you don't have a...
The council seems like they're encouraging me to do this. Is that correct? Any objections to that?
I'd like to go back to the lease agreement, too. Is there anything I need to do to help? Because we're identifying a problem that we have with our current ordinance, you know what I mean?
He doesn't want to start at a certain date, he wants to be at a certain location.
He wanted to, yeah.
I just make a vote on it.
You guys are going to go because you have the existing plates and the antique shop, so I thought that would be a nice little area for...
Hold on, what was, did there?
We're going back to the previous one, and poor Rich is wondering whether we need to make some motion to approve something for that gentleman to set up shop somewhere, particularly if he's going to use city property. I think you have to.
Do you want to make a...
I'd like to do something. I don't want...
Okay, let's rewind a bit.
You want to make a motion to dedicate a piece of property to the business right now, without...
Without what?
Insurance requirements will have to be dealt with.
There's a lot of little things to probably ask about yet on that.
Well, I'd like to make some headway here, at least. I don't feel that we should waste the kid's time to come here and talk to us, and then we didn't even do anything. We kind of just blew right past it, so I'm just asking that we can move forward with that a little bit.
What do you want to move forward with? What's your recommendation?
Something, anything. Anything positive with it would be great.
Agreement for usage, something like that?
I mean, as it stands, nothing was even done yet.
You've got to make a motion.
Is this the actual lease agreement that the city would sign? Does it have the address in or anything?
This is what he offers to his...
This is a lease agreement between he and the users.
One thing I did see on that, guys, and I didn't mention who was up there, but, and I just glanced over this, but I didn't see anywhere in the rental agreement where it says that the renter shall not be under the influence of alcohol or drugs. And I think that probably has to be in there at some point, to make sure they're not operating intoxicated, especially if it's an e-bike.
Because it's a powered device. I just think if we're going to approve something, we probably need to actually have...
Well, I didn't ask to approve it. I asked for some sort of progress on it. We, I don't know how we go about doing anything with it. I'm just asking that it's just not thrown away here, because that's where it seemed to have gone here, and moved right on to the other thing.
Can we do like a voice vote and a pledge of support for this project, or something like that?
Anything would be fine with me.
Well, I said we need to get a little more information. We probably need to get a lease, we need to see a lease agreement, because I mean, if we were going to do a final approval, right, we would have a lease agreement with whatever land, city land we were going to do with the charge requirements. I think that's what we need to see, and that's what we, I mean, we can make a pledge for anything we want, but until we actually have what we're going to approve, so that's what I would say, is that we need to progress towards something like that.
Rich, I'll go on record and say, and I support this, as long as everything works out legally.
Okay.
Yeah, and if it's a, if it's a city contract, you know, we can sit down and figure it out with them, you know, where this is going to go, what it, you know, what the obligation on the city's behalf and all that is, so.
Because we probably have to guarantee the land use for a certain period of time, with rights to continue the contract and things like that.
Can we ask the gentleman whether he has lease agreements with your current vendors? IDNR and things?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe you can share that lease agreement with us, so we can take a look at it and start working towards getting one in place for you here, okay?
All right.
And Terry, the concern about the e-bikes, alcohol and drugs. Am I mistaken, that anybody has their own, driving up and down the street, they're still liable to motor vehicle laws, correct?
Yeah, I just think it would be nice to have that in the rental agreement, so that it gives a little more teeth, if that's all.
That's really up to him, though. Honestly, Terry, this is an agreement between he and that user, and, you know, I think it would be a good idea for him to maybe have that prohibition in the agreement. Yeah. Just not something he's probably ever thought of, Terry. I'm sure he probably wouldn't rent to an intoxicated person, because he doesn't want to even think about taking on any of that liability.
Okay. So, back to the other one, but to answer your question about a voice vote, unfortunately, when I was doing a little bit of research about how we do our agendas and stuff like that, voice votes are not allowed for us, because we have to have a recorded vote for each individual elected official. They have to have their own recorded votes.
So, that's always a roll call, then. Easy enough.
You, well, now, we couldn't, we could always do consent agenda, but there's, because of a roll call for that, where you could, where, like, for example, if we wanted to roll five things together that we thought were never going to be an issue, like the bills, payroll, the minutes, and everybody's in agreement, then you could do a roll call vote for a consent agenda, and then knock out four or five items at once. That's an option we could do, always. But, that's why, so I think the reason that is, if someone's looking to make a motion to have Pat start looking at and drafting up some ordinance opportunities for us, is that correct?
Is this for the vehicle?
For the vehicle thing? Can I get a motion similar to that?
I'll make a motion that we have Pat modify the municipal code 8.44 to give us a means to remove vehicles from private property.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
We're back to the vehicles again.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephanelli?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next item is...
So, do we need anything with the...
Are we, are we just going to let the bike thing go, or can we advise Pat to look into the lease agreement on that?
That we were going to get a...
I think he's going to share a lease agreement with us, Rich, and then we'll take a look at that and start to work toward that. If you want to make a motion, Rich, to approve pursuing this bike rental arrangement in the city of Oglesby, and somebody can second it, we can do that, but it really isn't doing anything until we...
Until you actually have something to approve.
Until things fall into place. But, it indicates the council's approval of the thought, anyway.
Well, I'd like to do that. I'd like to make a motion to pursue into the lease agreement.
We pursue Bike Reynolds in Oglesby through Adventure E-Bike Rental LLC?
Yeah.
And I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge?
Aye.
Eunice?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stephanelli?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Okay. Next new business item. City issued cell numbers on the city's website. I've had numerous residents contact me, having a hard time getting ahold of some people. I took a look at our, you know, I told them, it says, "Well, you can go to our website, obviously, your contacts are there for that email address." And I found out that, I guess, last week, our website wasn't up to par. Didn't have the pictures on there, didn't have the emails, so the pictures and the emails are on there now. But, and I found out that there is some people here that don't want to have city cell phones or have city cell phones on the website. So, I thought I'd address that, because I'll make you aware that there are some residents that had some concerns about that. It's my opinion that if you're an elected official, you should have a city-issued cellphone, and whether you answered it or not, or answered it, whatever, your availability is up to you, but I think it's important that you have, that they have a means to contact you. I mean, if you look at the LP school board, these are non-compensated elected officials, and every single one of them has their contact information on their, the school's website. So, I thought I'd open up the discussion, see what people think about that.
Well, let's discuss. You said you've had numerous people get ahold of you. Have you gotten ahold of the commissioners that claiming don't want that on there? Have you said anything to them, or?
Yes.
Have you told these people that called you to call them?
They didn't tell me they wanted me to. There's only one I did, because they gave me their name. They told me their name, that they wanted them to call them back.
I would assume if you brought this up here, that you would have felt it was pretty important. So, if these people are contacting you, it's that important. Why would you not contact the commissioners and say, "Hey, John Smith is pretty upset about something. I feel you should call him." So, it just kind of seems weird that a few people have contacted you.
You think it's weird that people have contacted me that they can't get ahold of you?
Just...
And they're mad about it?
I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask you for names, but I would have just assumed if it was that important for you to bring this up, that you would have taken the liberty to get ahold of the council or the council members that need to be talked to. Nothing's been said.
I'll jump in here, because I'm one of them.
Yeah, I'm going to go next to.
I'm one of them he's talking about, but Jason, if you would have talked to you about it, I would have told you that I had a conversation with Becky about my phone, and I told her, "I don't really need a phone. What I need is just a number that is forwarded or ported to my personal cellphone." Because as you know, I have two phones I carry around with me all the time already. I don't want three. I was instructed to turn that cellphone in, and that they would figure out a way to just have the number forward to my phone like before. Well, I think once I started to look into that, I got a call from Jack one other day, and she said that that's not possible right now under our plan. But, the way I understand it, we're in negotiations for going with a new provider, and I think that technology is possible. So, that's where I'm at with it right now. I'm kind of in limbo. What I thought was going to work, obviously, is not, so that's why I'm in the predicament I'm in.
I know that certain city employees, they don't like, they have a city-issue flip phone. They don't like the phone. So, they use their personal phone, but they have that number, and that's forwarded to, so I know it's possible, at least for those phones or something like that. I'm not exactly sure.
I had it, when I had the phone itself, I had it forwarded to my phone. When I gave the phone back, it's not forwarding, so I don't know why that is. But, I was told that we're switching providers potentially, and that this is technology that would be available through this new provider. So, that's kind of why I'm in limbo, waiting to see how that goes.
Then maybe we should wait until the new provider comes in, and then see where we're at.
My understanding is it's possible under our current technology we have. I know that our streets department, our electric department workers, they don't carry two phones. I know they're using it. So, there's likely a way. We should probably look into that. And if there's something wrong with the numbers that it can't do with, then we'll go over there.
We've found out that...
Well, whoever took over Ivy Cellular.
Well, they're still running it, I think, aren't they? But, it's kind of not the best scenario right now.
I won't get on that subject during a live council meeting, but...
I'm not trying to go down that rabbit hole either. I'm just...
I got a comment. I mean, I have, I have no desire to waste taxpayer money on another cellular account when I work on... When I work out of the clerk's office, they give me my messages in real time. I sat down with you Friday and you had said this to me. And when I asked you to produce some names of people that called you, you gave me one. So when you say that you have a bunch of people calling you, somehow this just doesn't, it doesn't add up to me because I've had situations where people would call the clerk's office looking for me that they wanted to talk to me about a specific thing. I'll give you an example, actually. The presentation that I had put on in our last council meeting about building permits, because it had got cut off on the Facebook feed. I got that message within five minutes of the person calling, and I got them that PowerPoint presentation the same day. So as far as not getting ahold of anybody, I, I, I'm not buying it. And I told you that on Friday. If you want to have a phone, that's your prerogative, and I, I don't, I don't hold it against you. If you want a phone, you have a phone. But for, for accounts and finance, I don't believe that there's somebody that's going to want to call me at seven o'clock at night. You know, all the business is done, no, hang on, I'm not done. All the business is done in the clerk's office during regular daytime business hours. I'm trying to be mindful of not spending money foolishly just to say that I have a city cellphone. They can get ahold of me. I, I just, to me, I, it's, it's all about the money. We need to, we need to watch where we're spending. There's some places where we could spend it, and there's some places where I think it's just absolutely unnecessary. I, I had a city cellphone and I gave it to the building inspector because that's a perfect example. He's got to call people back when they're calling for inspection. So instead of the poor guy calling from his personal cellphone, at least he has a city cellphone. For me, it's a totally different scenario. So that's my position on it. And I told you that on Friday, and I'm saying the same thing publicly here.
Yep. I don't, I don't know how to respond to that. I don't think of it, I mean, we have an eighteen million dollar line item budget is what we have for our thing. So I don't really think a couple of cell phones is, is what's going to really put us over the edge on that. As far as saving mon, you know, so as far as saving money, I mean, it's the same thing with this thing going to the e, the e little books that we're going to have here. I don't look at it as a money-saving thing. To me, seven, seven hundred ninety-nine dollar devices, yeah, will save the paper, but it's going to take a long time to save that paper, so.
I doubt that.
You know, but I'm, I'm for it because it's something that moves us along to the next level of technology, not because it's a money-saving device there. I think there's important, one of the things that got changed was that the council has the ability to put anything they want on the agenda, right? And one of the people that talked, talked to me about this, they, they said it was a concern because, you know, if they put something on the agenda on Friday that I don't know anything about, how can I get ahold of them before, before you're voting on something on Monday? I said, that's a really good point. I said, I will, you know, I'll address it with the council of why we don't have people, everybody has their cell phones on there if you want to call them directly.
Well, I think I can help you with that.
Okay.
We did have an agreement that everything was supposed to be put together by Wednesday. And it seems to me that even today, being the perfect example, we're still getting stuff in on Monday, the day of the council meeting. So if we all adhere to that and we're good stewards, that shouldn't be a problem.
Whether we get something on Wednesday or not, the agenda doesn't get posted until Friday.
Posted until Friday, but nonetheless.
And that's when the public sees it.
Well, and it could be, it could be posted, and then it could be whatever's there on Friday is finalized, but we have options there. And that's, that all falls on us. We have to be the stewards of that.
I'm, I'm just saying, I got people calling me saying they're upset that they can't get ahold of people.
I'm not buying that. You didn't give me, you didn't give me any names when we talked about it. You gave me one name, and it was a banker that wanted to talk about somebody's personal construction loan. I got to be honest with you. As a city, as a city elected official, it's not my place to talk about somebody's personal loan. I wouldn't do that. And I'd call them back and I'd respectfully tell them that. So, but aside from that, there was no other names produced. And like I said, this was why email, when we started, was my big sticking point, was because at least this way, that's how many people communicate nowadays. And no sooner than somebody calls the clerk's office looking for me, you can bet the phone buzzes, all the information's there, and I can return the call without having to tote around two phones or, or having to waste any more taxpayer money on it, so.
All right. I mean, that's your thought.
I mean, we have a difference of opinion. I don't think it's, I don't think it's worth the oxygen to just sit here and debate it back and forth. If you want a phone, take a phone. I, I'm not, I'm going to choose not to take one, and that's...
I appreciate you speaking to that, so that...
Well, and I spoke to it on Friday. So all we're doing is regurgitating everything we talked about on Friday.
Well, it speaks to the public now on it.
I have no problem speaking to the public. That's no problem at all.
All right. Any other topics or questions or concerns over that at all? So we're going to leave it as is, I guess. Okay. Not sure what's going to go on people's business cards if you get ordered, but, all right. Next item, citywide recycling event.
Okay, so I've been working with Jim Posey, our representative from Municipal or Republic Services. We did have calls coming into the clerk's office, having a request for an e-waste event where they take away old computers and TVs and that. And I just want to thank Jim for giving me all the info. All the council has something in front of them as far as outlining what the price would be and all that. So I just wanted to put that in front of you and get your feedback on what you want to do with that and when we want to do it. And we also have Jim here if we have to send any questions his way where he might be able to address them.
Any questions, concerns over that? I, I mean, I feel like it's been hardly two years, but it might have been three years, it sounds like, since we've done it. I, I don't know how often we should be doing something like that, if it's every couple of years, or do we have any thoughts on that?
Well, I think if we're getting calls in from the residents, there's a desire for it. Again, just like the last thing we spoke about, obviously, I've taken action on it at this point. I do think that it'd be realistic to probably set it up towards the spring of next year because now we're kind of getting tighter in the year. And for Jim and for Republic Services, it's going to put them under the gun. And, or they may not even be able to accommodate it because of the short timeframe. But I do think I'd like to get this on your radar. So if we need to formally approve something for next spring, we can get it done, and then Jim and I can work together to, to facilitate it. The only thing that's not listed in here that the council, that I'd like to apprise the council of is that we would have to have staff there that we'd have to pay that day to work it. And we would ask for a driver's license and a utility bill from the person that's bringing something in so that we can, in fact, verify that it's a City of Oglesby taxpaying resident, not just somebody from another town that wants to get rid of a TV or a computer at our expense.
I think we need to be a stickler on that. And if they show up without the documentation, then they need to leave, get out of line, go home and get it and bring it back because we can't, this thing will, will go crazy if we let everybody in here to pick up stuff.
With that amount, is it possible that we could limit it to one or two containers, just in case we get...
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that's kind of up to us. You know, we can, we can go either way. And this is something that I could have, because of the dollar cost, I could have just said, go with it. But I do think once, you know, something like this, because it would be a city event, I think I, I like having your guys' feedback on it. I don't want to just take it, run with it without hearing from you guys.
I think talking about it for the spring so that way you get a nice, long e-time for that, people are aware it's coming and stuff like that, so they can prepare for it. I think would be a, a good thing.
So would you guys be in favor or opposed to doing this in spring, setting up this kind of event? And then if I need to work with each commissioner or however their oversight fits into this, you know, we can kind of work out the details. Like I said, the first things that stick into my head is having somebody come up with a driver's license and a utility bill so that you can verify, okay, hey, this is a taxpaying resident, not just some guy off the street that we're going to put the bill on, get rid of his electronics.
Well, I can have a police officer there in uniform to check those requirements. That way, it has a little bit of teeth, and nobody's going to try to pull a fast one.
Yeah, and I think, Becky, did we have somebody from the streets department in the past that kind of helped facilitate it?
I know that there were several employees involved. I'm not sure exactly who.
Okay. Well, we can work.
We'll have to figure out where we're going to have it at, too.
Yeah.
Becky, do you know, and this is kind of an awful lot of question, but it kind of relates, we talked to this about a couple of weeks ago about making sure we had a laptop that had that software on there for utility billing. In the event that City Hall ever had to roll to the fire station to operate out of there, that we had one of those that had that means to look up residents and utility billing? Has there been, any look into that yet by chance, or it's probably too far on the radar?
No, I, I haven't actually looked into it, but that's all held on our server. You guys are better about technology than I am.
It's all backed up, so.
I'm not sure that we have access. It's not in the cloud or someplace like that where we could pull it off.
I remember the laptops. I remember the laptops. At one point, the purpose of them was, the height of COVID, so that way people could work from home. And I was curious if there was a way of how people actually access utility billing from home then.
Well, you can access a desktop.
Oh, so you were doing remote?
We do it remotely.
Ah, okay.
But we have to have access to our server.
Okay. So that might be something like if they, like, let's say we continue to do this down at the, I think the last thing we did was at the electric department parking lot, for example. And then we had the network down there. Would that be something you'd be able to access the utility billing from a laptop?
We had Wi-Fi available to us, but I don't believe we would have it down at the swimming pool.
No, at the electric department, I believe we do.
That's what I'm saying. I don't know the range of how that goes outside the building, but that might be something to look into.
Well, and if we have internet access there, we can, we can turn it into Wi-Fi easily. All that is, is just plugging it into the device that's going to Wi-Fi it, so that's not a big deal.
I think we got some options to look at for the spring, then.
All right. Well, then, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve this for spring of next year.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
Eutis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stefanelli?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next item I have to talk about is under new business, it is not here tonight. And at twelve oh one PM, when we put out the final agenda, it was on there. So I'm told somebody removed something from the agenda.
Point of order.
What's your point of order?
It's not on the agenda. I asked to have it removed. I did it in the right amount of time. I'm asking, we don't need to discuss it tonight.
We don't need to discuss it?
Point of order. It's not on the agenda. It's off the agenda.
Point of order works there.
It is how point of order works, actually.
Yeah, if it's not on the agenda.
Well, we have new business that we, if I remember right, new business or old business, you could talk about anything.
We also have to give the public forty-eight hours notice, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You, you went on me about this a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
So under Robert's rules of order, you can't discuss that tonight.
I'm not discussing that. I'm discussing the fact that things are being pulled off the agenda.
Same thing again to us that you did before, so a point of order on that as well. You can't sit here and talk bad about us and say that we took something off the agenda.
I think we're at public comments. Is that where we're at?
I don't think that's how that works. I don't think that's how point of order works.
Because I've been reading.
Okay. Well, we're going to have to talk about this again then in the future.
When it's on the agenda. Thanks.
All right. Next item is public comments over any topic. Barring none, we'll go into commissioner reports. Commissioner Stefanelli.
Well, I'm happy to say that we worked through the demolition process for the former Cindy's Restaurant. They got it cleaned up. I, it's definitely a weight off my shoulders. I'm glad that it worked out. And I hope that, you know, she's able to rebuild or that they work out some kind of an arrangement there that everybody benefits from and that we have a business there again in the future. I did talk about moving us to Electronic Tablet in the future. I'll have something more next meeting. That's all I got.
Thank you much. Commissioner Eutis?
Only thing I have is just to update the council, SINTAS with the centralized supply storage will be here this coming Thursday at four PM to go over some pricing and some services that they can offer and give us more details. So I'll be sharing that with the council come next meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner McDermott?
Okay. First off, I'd like to ask citizens to help make Oglesby better by helping with the requirement of EPA with the cross-connection survey as well as the survey to identify lead pipes. You should have received something in your bill. It's a requirement program which the City of Oglesby was awarded. Next, hydrant flush is set to begin October second and through October sixth. Residents may expect low water pressure or a rust color to the water. You are suggested to run the water to resolve the issues. Also, branch chipping will begin October sixteenth through the twentieth. As a reminder, this would be good opportunity for residents to clear their trees and bushes from power lines, streets and sidewalks. Purdy ordinance twelve point twelve twenty-eight point zero five zero. And one more thing, the leaf vac will start October third through November seventeenth. I hope to have more details at the next City Hall meeting on this. All right? And thank you, and good night.
Thank you much. Commissioner Baldridge?
I'd like to start off with thanking Chief Margus. He got us in contact with Elite Seamless Gutters. Today, they were down at the Lehigh Park and put a much-needed one hundred and four-foot gutter with a topper over that, or a leaf guard, I guess. They did that all for free to the city. That was all from Elite Seamless Gutters, and I'd like to thank them for that. I'd also like to thank, as I said earlier, Adventure E-Bike Rentals, Joshua, thank you very much for donating that bike to Officer Budock. It's very much needed and appreciated. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you much. Mayor's report. A couple of things. We did have a, SURF internet came down today. We were able to kind of do a presentation and thank the first resident that signed up for the, the Multi-Gig, which is the Bob Meredith. So we gave them a little thank you presentation for that today. And also, SURF surprised us with, they gave us a little thank you thing here of being their first multi-gig city. So they gave us this nice little map thing here. It's a, it's a kind of artwork here, and it's engraved, and it looks, looks actually wooden, and it's got blue underneath to show the rivers and everything. It's quite beautiful. So we'll find a place to put it up somewhere in City Hall for display. The other thing is, Becky, do we have the thing to go on the, the screen that shows the, the website, the website for people?
We do not, but it is on the Facebook page.
Okay. So one of the things I got a chance to talk with them about, so there were some residents that called and had some concerns about like SURF having something like on, on the lawn or the grass yet or something that they didn't come back for. There is a website that people can, can go to, and they can put their name, number, and, and their, their address and whatever the concern is, and they'll make sure they come back through to take a look at that. It should have gone out on the city's Facebook page today, so there is a little, you can either go to the website, or you can even just use the little, the little code verification with your camera there. Should be easy for it. So. Next thing was sixteen September is our Boots and Brews. Entertainment's going to be from five to ten, whiskey romance, DJ Boomer, beer, barbecue, bags, axe throwing, and ride the bull. So please come out, take a look at that. Should be a good time. And I'd like to thank LaSalle County Cruisers for our Eats in the Streets. It was our second annual. We had a lot of improvement from the first time we did it, and we're continuing to learn how we do our events, and it was great. And that's all I have. Other than that, let's see here. We have executive session tonight, and I believe the reasons to go into executive session we're going to use is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employer or legal counsel for the public body. Collecting negotiating matters or deliberations concerning salaries. Well, actually, we're not doing that one anymore because one of the items got removed, so we won't do that. And then the last one is pending or probable litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body. So can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
Eutis?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stefanelli?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. And I do not expect any actions after the executive session.
Oh, thank you, Tom. Thank you very much. Yes. That was completely unexpected. Sixty-two, it's too young.
Jim, thanks a lot, I really appreciate all the, yeah, all the, yeah.
AJ? Yeah, yeah. Wasn't that? You've been said for a long time.
It has seen better days there, Tony.
It has seen better days. Lot of, lot of firearms.
Can I get a motion to go back into open session?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Ballbridge?
Aye.
Judith?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Curn?
Aye. So there's nothing further? If I can get a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ballbridge?
Aye.
Judith?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Curn?
Aye. We are adjourned.